Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay. Hello, everybody, and welcome to our final May meeting. Um, we'll call this or meeting to order at six thirty P M. And roll call. Commissioner Mishra.
Present.
Commissioner Pradeep Kumar.
Present.
Commissioner Quang present Commissioner T Lung is absent Commissioner Liu.
Present.
Commissioner Bunso.
Present.
Commissioner Megan Lung.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez Minas.
Present.
Commissioner Singh.
Present.
Commissioner Mascherinos.
Present.
And Commissioner Jana Patti.
Present.
Okay. We will move on to our consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the May twentieth Agenda attendance and meeting minutes?
Commissioner Gonzalez Minis approves that motion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and the motion passes. So we'll move on to our public records. Do we have any correspondence?
No, we do not.
Okay, moving on to open forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on item not on today's agenda?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll move on to our discussion and action items. Our first item is an informational about the volunteer task force by Ian Lanning.
I've never got to do this before. Hi, everyone. Um, I just came to give a little quick thing. I know you guys all have your your groups, your Yaks and whatnot. And um, we love that you guys are active in the community. We loved coming to the Hammond Park tree planting with you guys. And so this summer, we are launching a volunteer task force. It's gonna be pretty cool. Essentially, uh, once a week, we're just gonna go out to the community, uh, to a place that the task force chooses, right? Somewhere where there's momentum that needs to be beautified, and we're just gonna go out and beautify it ourselves. Uh, we're thinking it's gonna start as just once a week, but if it ramps up, we could do it twice a week. Um, and we would love your guys' input and feedback on where we should be going. If there's any blight by your schools, we'd love to take care of it. And it's just a fun way to get out and uh, help your community. And I'm sure you guys all know this map. Uh, anywhere that's colored, we'll go to. Um, I mean, if you really wanted, we could go to Campbell. It wouldn't bother me, but preferably Santa Jose. And then if you guys want to join and share this with all of your groups, that's our Q R code. I also want to give a little slight pitch. We do have our State of the City on June first. And we are not doing it the traditional way. We're doing it the fun way. And we're gonna do a service project. So it's gonna be each council member leading a service project and taking volunteers out. We'll be doing uh, tree planting, creek cleanups, and uh, we have these stencils that we're gonna put on the picnic tables and paint pretty flowers and leaves and whatnot on the picnic tables throughout the park. So if you guys uh, would like more info, you could go to our website or social media page, and we'd love for you guys to join us. It's gonna be pretty fun. I'm not gonna lie. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll open it up to Commissioner Discussion. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, it looks like we don't have any questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next up, we have School City Collaborative Spring twenty twenty four convening by Ms. Columbia.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Vidya Kalambe, and I'm here to present on the spring convening of the School City Collaborative. Um, established in nineteen ninety seven, this uh, School City Collaborative is comprised of local education agency leaders, the mayor, council members, and city staff. The mission of the collaborative is to advance the educational attainment of San Jose students by developing and maintaining a strong collaboration that will identify the needs of students and align resources to ensure equitable educational outcomes for all San Jose youth. The executive committee of the collaborative consists of the vice mayor, county superintendent of schools for Santa Clara County, superintendents from Luther Burbank and East Side Union High School District, and the city librarian. The council members from District Three, Four, and Five are also part of this collaborative as are staff from various city departments. Here is the list of the thirty-six educational agencies that are part of this collaborative. The spring convening, the agenda is posted here, the spring convening primarily focused on the results of the twenty twenty-three priorities survey administered during our fall convening. We shared the results of the survey and brought staff from various key city departments to speak on high priority topics. The Department of Transportation, Housing, and S H P San Jose Public Police Department addressed topics identified as high priorities in the survey results. We also heard from the city manager's office on city, state, and federal policy impacting local education agencies. As you can see, school safety and in particular, safe passage to schools top the list of priorities, followed by coordination of student and family-focused resources. Survey respondents also reported that like they would like to see program updates, new opportunities, and a space for new partnerships within the framework of the School City Collaborative, which we um, which we at the library plan to foster at this and upcoming convenings. A series of presentations focused on these high priorities areas was um, included in this convening with information and resources for families experiencing homelessness, safe passage to school updates, and the role of the police department's school liaison unit. The housing department presented information on the community plan to end homelessness here for you hotline, the outreach strategy interim housing for families and homelessness prevention system. The city of San Jose's Department of Transportation presented an overview on the school safety program, school access, circulation study status, school crosswalk enhancements, and an update on the walk and roll program. The police department um, presented on the school liaison unit overview, including between the duties, divisions, districts, and contact information by division and district. The city of San Jose's policy and legislation team presented on the city ordinances on R Vs and encampment management, state budget for education and fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, state assembly bills related to education, the federal affordable connectivity program, and the federal bill related to education. All presentations are available with the library. If you're interested, I'm happy to um, send out a link after this meeting. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer at this time.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
No, we don't.
Okay, then we move on to Commissioner Discussions. Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Liu.
Perfect. Thank you for your presentation. Um, so I was wondering, the city school collaborative recently um, pretty major news that the Allen Rock Union High School District Superintendent was recently terminated from her role. I'm wondering what effect that has had on the city school collaborative in the spring, because that's when they last convene, right?
Um, I don't think we had an, we we did forward the invite to the acting superintendent, so. But I can send back to you if that actually attended.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then a follow-up question was that um, the data that you presented, the twenty twenty-three survey data results with the three goals being safe passage of school, coordination with students and family-focused resources, and then post-secondary educational opportunities. Is there uh, you know where the respondents are from? Are they concentrated in a specific area of San Jose? Do you have that data on you?
We, we, I don't have it on you, but you do have that data. If you want, we can send it to you.
Okay, yes, please.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions? What's your Mascherinos?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to say thank you for the city collaborative survey. Um, I remember taking in my school, and I think that it's great that we have some youth input on our issues and things that we want to see in our own schools. And I know that there's dozen many times in my school personally for all students on campus to take it. So I just wanted to thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Liu.
Thank you. As Commissioner Mascherinos was talking, I had something, I don't know what. Um, in the School City Collaborative, what outcomes either this year, past year, has been the result of this partnership, or have there any, have there been any tangible changes that have come with this partnership?
The collaborative space, so um, the um, superintendents and and the executive committee just together decide what they want to hear, what they want to advance every year, and they get together to do that. Um, the the most of the work happens at the school district. So um, the for us, the biggest outcome is to provide this convening space for everyone to discuss the ideas.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? If not, we will move on. Thank you, Ms. Columbia, for your presentation. Uh, moving on to reports and information only, we do not have a report from the city manager's office, so we will move on to our council liaison announcements.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Good to see all of you. I'm gonna give a report today. Um, instead of talking about a particular agenda item that occurred at a recent council meeting, I'm going to do a bit of overview on the ongoing budget process in the city. As you likely know, the city is nearing the conclusion of its budget process for determining a budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. The past two weeks, there have been budget study sessions where we've had public hearings for people to give input on the proposed budgets. So uh, I'd like to provide some context. So as you know, the fiscal year begins on July first. The city must adopt a budget to determine how the city spends funds, as well as how it generates revenue through fees and charges. The city's revenue primarily comes from fees, charges, and taxes such as property and sales taxes, or other sources such as grants or bond measures. The city's spending is divided between the capital budget, which determines how the city spends on capital improvement projects such as building parks or repaving roads, and the operating budget, which determines how the city spends on everything else, including staffing and services. Budgets must be balanced for the city, which means that the city obviously spends, its spending must be offset by the revenue it takes in. This year, the city is projected to have a fiscal deficit, which means that the city will look to find ways to reduce spending, which could impact things such as programs, services, and staffing. The budget development process occurs in three phases, and this process is shaped by the interaction between the community, the city council, and the city manager's office, which I will also describe as the administration. The community gives input to the council, the council gives direction to the administration, and the administration develops, writes, and implements the budget. The budget development occurs from October to June. From October to December, the community provides input on the budget through contact with the mayor, with the mayor and council members, as well as through community meetings. The city council approves a report on the prior fiscal year comparing how projected revenue and expenditures uh, compared to actual revenue and expenditures. And this comparison of the projected versus the actual revenue and expenditures in the prior year helps inform their development of priorities for the next fiscal year. And the and the administration is the one that presents this report. It also uses, it also creates preliminary forecasts for spending revenue levels in the current fiscal year, which will be used by departments to begin shaping their strategies for how to achieve their budgets in the coming fiscal year. From January to March, the community continues to provide input and participates in things such as the mayor's budget town hall, as well as the council held public hearings on the March budget message. The council develops their budget priorities and provides direction to the administration to shape how the budget's going to look through approving something called the mayor's March budget message. The administration, meanwhile, releases their budget request, the city manager's budget request, which describes their recommended expenditures based on prior council direction, as well as a five-year forecast for revenue in projections. Then we go to the third and final phase in April to June, which is where we currently are. The can, the community continues to provide input at things such as the public hearings you've seen or different community meetings across the city. The council reviews the proposed budget, which has been prepared by the administration, and submits budget documents from the mayor and council members, which are more specific spending requests from each of the electeds. The council then deliberates, of course, and votes to approve a final budget in the mayor's June budget message that will occur on June eleventh. Then on June eighteenth, they will formally adopt the budget. Meanwhile, the administration has prepared these proposed budget documents, which also include details on strategies to achieve the balanced budget. The administration also offers their own recommended amendments for council consideration. That's an overview of the budget process. My citations are from the Office of the City Manager's Budget Office, particularly a document regarding the annual budget process chronologically, as well as the calendar that they have. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. So I had a quick question um, about the community meetings and hearings that you hold. How much weight do the people who attend those meetings have in the decision-making process for the budget?
That would be a question for council members and the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? If not, we'll move on. Thank you for your report. Um, next is the San Jose Library Report by Ms. Ornot.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Michelle Ornot, Deputy Director of Public Services for the library. Pre-registration is now open for Summer twenty twenty-four, the We Thrive High School Entrepreneur Camp. So do you want to end the summer with some of your own cash and maybe your own business? Then join the We Thrive High School Entrepreneur Camp. This is being done in partnership with the library, and teens are invited to learn how to start their own business, solve community problems, and sell products or services at a pop-up market where you get to keep the profits. We thrive as a nonprofit organization that helps youth identify solutions in their community, hone skills to build a business, and launch real microenterprises. The program starts on June eleventh and will be held at S J P L's teen HQ at the King Library. Space is limited, but you can visit our events page for more information and to pre-register. We are also celebrating AAPI Month. During the month of May, the library is celebrating and honoring the contributions, achievements, and the rich culture of the AAPI community through a series of storytimes, arts and crafts, and special traveling exhibit, plus reading lists provided by library staff and online resources, including a virtual encyclopedia with over three hundred musical albums from Asia and the Pacific Islands. To visit, to view our complete list of programs and more, visit sjpl.org forward slash AAPI. And then lastly, we have summer reading program starting. So summer learning kicks off on June first, and this goes through July thirty-first, and you have a chance to win fun prizes for reading over the summer. Last year, nearly eleven thousand people participated in the summer learning program. And this year, the library is looking to increase that number by offering great prizes such as an interactive toy robot for pre-readers, musical dance pad for readers, mini drone for teens, wireless earbuds for teens, and Wi-Fi Bluetooth projector for adults. In addition to encouraging reading over the summer, families will also have the opportunity to enjoy fun events such as petting zoos, magic shows, and circus acts, as well as participate in educational opportunities such as coding and STEAM programs. Along with the summer learning program, the library will kick off its sixteenth annual graphic novel making contest, which invites people of all ages to create their own graphic novel for a chance to win up to one hundred dollars in gift cards and an art supply kit valued at one hundred fifty dollars. With a graphic novel enthusiast, will also have the opportunity to attend programs throughout the summer such as graphic novel book club and programs. Will they be able to receive advice from contest experts? Lastly, the library will host its cosplay on display program from May twenty-third through August tenth. We're inviting people to dress up in character and take a picture holding their San Jose library card for a chance to be recognized by the library and receive a prize. The graphic novel making contest winners and cosplay on display participants will be invited to attend a special award ceremony this September, where winners will be recognized and presented with their prizes. For complete details of all the library's summer programs, visit sjpl.org forward slash summer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions? If not, we can move on. Thank you for your report, and we'll move on to the Chair Report. Um, so for my report, I would like to thank everybody for submitting your Yak nominations for our end-of-the-year event. With these done, the next step that you need to do is write around a two-minute speech for each member that you nominated and link the document with the speech to the responsibility, oh, sorry, the responsibilities tracker sheet, um, so that we know everything's in order and complete. I also wanted to highlight the importance of registering and having your Yak members register, because there are seventy tickets available. Next, I wanted to talk about the Blue Zones Initiative you received an email about. And this is an opportunity to see how the youth commission can learn about the work the initiative is doing with San Jose. There will be a keynote speaker and some focus groups. Moving on, our end-of-the-year event will be on Monday, June tenth at five P M. at City Hall Rotunda. And our theme is Youth Commission Summer Gala. So please come dressed appropriately, and I will also take this opportunity to announce two of our new confirmed youth commissioners for the next upcoming fiscal year. We have Genesis Arroyo for District Four and Marian Kutcharuski for Citywide. Yay. Um, and I just wanted to leave off with my sincere thanks for an amazing year. We got a lot of great work done, and um, it was really a pleasure working with you all. Okay, so moving on to our city district reports, District One.
Uh, hi, guys. So I just have a couple of updates from my Yak. So first of all, uh, thanks to Mr. Durge. My Yak and I are in touch with Professor Richard Coase from San Jose State University and Allison Sinjalani, who is a policy manager at S V At Home. Uh, so we hope to connect and learn from them, not only to further develop our transportation memorandum, but also to improve traffic safety in San Jose, where we're primarily focused on using technology and city data to identify problem areas and propose effective solutions um, regarding road safety. Apart from that, I have nominated four of my Yak members, Anushka, Anshika, Jander, and Uvraj to receive awards at the Youth Commission's end-of-the-year event in June. So we're super excited for that. Um, in general, as a team, we worked really hard this year to, you know, host some amazing events and draft several policies, and um, in general, super proud of this entire team. So thank you all for an amazing year, and that's all for me.
Thank you, District Two.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Um, I have a really small update. So first regarding our Yak, we wrapped up all our meetings and activities for this year, and it was definitely a very interesting year with a lot of learning experiences, and I guess we were pretty successful um, as our first year as our Yak. And um, I had the pleasure of presenting the Youth Commission annual report to the N S C last week. And just regarding District Two events in general, the District Two Neighborhood Leadership Council is hosting National Night Out um, this summer on August twenty-second from six to eight P M. So it'd be great if you guys could attend. You're free. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Um, for my district's update, at our last and final Yak meeting, we reviewed the things that we've worked on over the past year. Then we spent some time deliberating over any future initiatives our next commissioner could work on. We discussed policy ideas, event planning, and increasing our social media presence for a larger audience. Right now, there is no confirmed commissioner for the next year, but I am sure they will do great. District Five.
This, the majority of late April and early May was off due to AP exams. Um, we are gonna continue to plan for the twenty twenty-four Quarter Fest with District Five Councilmember Office. I will continue to lead the civic engagement ad hoc committee over the summer, and we are exploring the idea of tabling at a V I A event upcoming June. We are finalizing our upcoming work plan for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five fiscal year. I would like to thank my Yak for the effort that they put in over this past year. Special thank you to Adra, Behan, Varsha, Carlos Luciano, Ashraf, um, Raphael, Casey, Chloe, Danny, Ahana, and Caroline for their participation in city government.
Thank you, District Six.
Okay, so as our fiscal year and the commission is wrapping up, we're also ending all of our meetings and everything for this year. Um, but I have nominated Marion, who's gonna be our new citywide commissioner um, for one of my Yak nominations, so that's very exciting. And then, as always, for the communications part, I think we're wrapping up, but if you do have anything, this is just going forward for next year, just let me know. Um, and then I just want to say thank you for all my fellow commissioners, especially my seniors, like literally everyone. Thank you so much for such an amazing year. So thank you.
Thank you, District Seven.
All right. Hello, everyone. So from District Seven's corner, we had a great housing policy workshop with senior city housing department officer Jacqueline Jimeno Chapot with over fifteen people in attendance. We discussed the importance of affordable housing, learned about historical and future housing policies on the ballot, and worked on drafting our own equitable policies. I also attended the Blue Zone Special Meeting with our D eight and D five commissioners to represent the upcoming projects in our district. And we received a very fascinating presentation from a Cambridge professor who did a data analysis on our city's wellness levels. Um, I nominated three of my Yak members for the awards, and I'm super excited for them to receive their recognition for their hard work. Um, yeah, shout out to my members, and too sad, I cannot attend, but I will be cheering on everyone from afar. Um, we will meet one last time at the Yak to reflect on our year and also to plan our next year event and policies. Um, overall, I'm super proud of my D seven Youth Advisory Council and also this youth commission. We've accomplished so much in this short term, and I will miss you guys, but I know you guys will do amazing next year.
Thank you, District Eight.
So for my uh, report is, I wrapped up, I also wrapped up my last Yak meeting. Um, also this weekend, I had a study smart with Andrew for District Five, and we um, so we got to learn a lot of new thing. Um, I wouldn't really say new, but we got to learn a a couple of stuff about our our careers and what we want to major in. Um, another thing, uh, this weekend also, we had a, we had a, oh, no, we had a a health and fair event on May eleventh with a hundred and eighty people at uh, at D five, I mean, at D eight, Welch Park. Um, so it was pretty cool, because it was uh, we had a lot of resources, and we got, I got to connect with a lot of people. Uh, we also had a dumpster day and litter pickup on May eighteenth. So this uh, this Saturday also, we had that. And for my uh, oh, and also I have a U Y C C meeting tomorrow that I'm going to be attending. So me and my uh, advise, uh, Youth Advisory Council will be talking about um, upcoming events that we will be planning, and um, we'll see. That's it.
Thank you, District Nine.
Uh, yeah, so because of AP seasons, we were uh, we were not able to meet this month as a Yak. But uh, we're basically just, at this point, just wrapping up the year. We sent the approved flyer within our Yak to the activity directors in District Nine for next year's outreach, and we are still working on nominations for our Yak.
Thank you, District Ten.
Yeah, so this past month, I had the pleasure of presenting to LEC about our annual report. I also am in contact with our district office about our, we adopted Alman Lake Park, and so they reached out to plan an event with us. So been in contact with them. I attended our twenty-year celebration at Vinland Library. I also am past hosting my last Yak meeting of the year with our council member to share what we did, and also just to hear his input on next year and any advice that he has, and also just wanted to thank my Yak for a great year and all the commissioners for all the fun that we've had.
Thank you, Citywide.
Yeah, thank you. So since this is my final general meeting as the Citywide, I'd like to take the opportunity to state how grateful I am to have served on this role for two years. I mean, it's been a challenging journey, but I've experienced growth, and having the forum to speak to thousands of youth has been a unique experience that I'll hold on to for a long time. So two weeks ago, I attended the NSE presentation and nominated my Yak member socket, Patak, to receive an award on June tenth for his work, and he's done a great job both as a Yak member and beyond. So I hope that all of you will be as impressed as I am with the work that he's done. But I think just to close it off, I'm extremely excited about the policies and projects that we've passed and what future commissions will do, and I'm confident that they're going to build on what we have accomplished over these last two years. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. We will move on to our future agenda items. Do we have any future agenda items that are not covered in the work plan?
Chair, can you circle back around to District Four?
Oh, District Four.
Hi, so brief update for this month. We've basically been wrapping things up for the year. We have been working on our period policy, period product policy with the office and doing some budget analysis of that. We have also been transitioning into the next year, planning things out, potential events we want to repeat, and I'll be holding some transition meetings with the upcoming Youth Commissioner for District Four, Genesis, very soon. And then our last thing is basically just AIM, our advise, inspire, motivate conference, focused on the theme of encouraging youth to explore diverse careers and have access to different career resources, happening June eighth. And I'm looking, library, I would love if my fellow commissioners could outreach to their Yak's and encourage them to come. I think be really great opportunity that is also basically right into the beginning of summer for a lot of folks. And aside from that, general reflections on my time here on the Youth Commission, it's been an amazing time. I've grown so much in this past year. It's only been a year, but it's felt like a long time in a good way. And so, yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing what the Youth Commission does in the future.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any future agenda items? If not, then we'll move on. Our next general meeting will be a Youth Commission retreat in August. The date and location are to be determined. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner, Commissioner goes on to use motions to adjourn the meeting.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner, please give more seconds of motion.
Okay, and this motion passes. We'll adjourn this meeting at seven oh four PM.